As sure our people's folks are aware, we have an appropriation of fifty-nine million dollars for Sterling Middle School project scope and budget agreement. What's been, I'm gonna call it...
Councilman.
Present.
Councilwoman.
Present.
Councilman.
Present.
Councilwoman.
Present.
Councilwoman.
Present.
Chair.
Present.
We have a forum, we're actually gonna sit, because these microphones are a little short.
So again, thank you to the folks that see out in the audience for taking the time to come and participate in this evolutionary discussion. We have members of the project team as well as members of the staff at school, like to point out Superintendent Schools Dr. Chris Cairo as well as Dr. Francisini and the staff here at Sterling. The sequence of the meeting will be as follows, we'll have the opportunity to take in a presentation by the architect Steve Dunlap from AI3. He'll take us through some slides, and then Steve, again, folks made an opportunity out here this evening, we would open it up to the public comments, and then from there we'll have a deliberation amongst the city council. So if you folks will be so kind in joining me in welcoming Mr. Dunlap from AI3, so the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, council. My presentation tonight, we agreed certainly, we had the opportunity and appreciate the opportunity the council gave us to present in detail the design of the proposed new Sterling Middle School, and all of the boards and floor plans and menderings are out in the lobby meeting, which you saw in our prior presentation. Tonight, we're just going to review briefly the budget estimate that was submitted as part of the project scope and budget agreements, so that the subcommittee has a better, an opportunity to ask any questions about that. As part of the grant offer that the MSBA has made to the city of Quincy, and as a reminder, that grant has been forwarded and pays for a significant portion, we're just gonna talk a little bit about that portion tonight, of the Sterling Middle School project. As part of that, the city was required to prepare a very detailed project budget that was submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And I know that we've had the opportunity to review that budget, and I'm just going to go through categorically the various pieces of that budget, so that if there are any questions, we can answer them. This is what the Massachusetts School Building Authority refers to as a Form 3011, so every single school project in the Commonwealth is required, if they're soliciting grant approval, to fill out this exact same form and categorize all the costs for their project in this exact same way. It allows the Commonwealth to compare very easily, project to project, every single line item that might make up the budget of the project, and so I'm gonna review those items. The very first piece of it at the top involves the feasibility study agreement, you can see feasibility study agreement, there are a handful of line items right here. This is all of the study and schematic work that has already occurred to date, and the way the MSBA structures this, the School Building Authority structures this, is they have a column that is the proposed budget as identified by the city, and then the MSBA has a column where if there are any items within that proposed budget that they deem ineligible, they categorize them and include them in this column, and then the third column is in fact the amount of money they're providing for the grant, or they're recognizing as eligible for the grant, I should say. And so you can see the total here for the feasibility study agreement, in other words, all the work that was done to receive the grant was six-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars, and you can see that the MSBA identified that that entire amount was in fact eligible for grant reimbursement. And I'm gonna walk through the various categories, as I said, those are monies that were already expended in order to prepare the documentation to get the grant. A lot of the remaining monies we'll be talking about are projected budgets moving forward, so they asked that we categorize each of the phases of construction, and we categorize, for example, all of the owner's project manager fees, so all of those fees are categorized in this section titled owner's project manager. So you can see they're broken down by project phase, and you can see there's one small area here where the MSBA has inserted an ineligible cost, and I should explain ineligible sounds like a negative word. All projects in the Commonwealth have certain portions of them that are designated ineligible. It doesn't mean that the MSBA thinks that work shouldn't be done, or that piece should not be included in the project, it simply means that happens to be an item that they determined over the course of the last few years that they don't participate in reimbursing. So on every single project that's ever been done under the MSBA and Commonwealth, there are so-called ineligible costs, it's not, it's not a bad thing. In this case, the eighty-six thousand that they've identified as ineligible for the owner's project manager fees happens to be the amount that they've determined is associated with the auditorium, and I think it was Councilor Palamucci who mentioned in our last meeting the fact that that was in fact an ineligible cost, and we've known that all along, but what they're doing is they're extracting the fees that would be associated with your owner's project manager that they think would end up allocated to the auditorium specifically. They also asked us to summarize all of the architectural and engineering fees associated with the project, so you can see in your documentation that there's a category, architecture and engineering, it's located here, including the reversal pieces of that, you can see it's broken out by project phase and line item. And you can see there are some items in the ineligible column for the architectural and engineering fees. Again, those are all directly associated with the MSBA's allocation for the auditorium. So they've taken the size of the auditorium as compared, as a percentage of the total building, and then they've taken that same percentage and applied it to the architectural and engineering fees to extract those as part of the auditorium being ineligible. Go down to the next category. There's an item, CM, CM at risk, pre-construction services, you can see they've identified about seventy-eight hundred dollars ineligible cost, again, that's associated with the auditorium. You can see there's an extended series of line items where there's no ineligible cost, so I'll just move right on through those. And then you get down to a category that's identified as special construction demolition, and you can see there's a line item for hazardous material abatement and asbestos flooring abatement. These happen to be areas where, for example, the MSBA has never reimbursed for the removal of asbestos-containing floor material in an existing building, under the theory that there might possibly be a district out there that has already done that, and therefore they would somehow be penalized if other districts were given the grant money to do that. So they've always on all the projects made that ineligible cost, and then the forty-eight thousand that you see is because they also categorically don't reimburse for the removal of underground oil storage tanks, so those two line items happen to apply to those. If you move down to building site work, you can see the various categories of site work for the project broken out, and then you can see at the very bottom, scopex excluded site cost, the MSBA happens to cap the eligible site cost at eight percent of the total construction cost. So as I said earlier, just like with every project in the Commonwealth having some ineligible cost, every project in the Commonwealth has some ineligible cost directly related to site, it just happens to be that the MSBA caps their participation in that at eight And then there's some, we get into the section of the budget that deals specifically with construction cost, all of the items that they have identified as ineligible there are directly related to overheads, markups, insurance, and profits on the construction cost related to the auditorium, so that's the reason you see a number of those items And then there's an overall excluded construction cost of fourteen-point-three million, that is related to both the auditorium construction cost, and then there's a construction cost cap per square foot that MSBA applies. So ultimately, it results on the Sterling project of a fourteen-point-three million dollar exclusion. And all of these ineligible's and exclusives are very common on all projects, and it sounds like there are a number of them because I'm focusing on those, I'm not pointing out the millions of dollars that are in fact eligible in the project, but I think it's important to highlight those because it's easy to see where they're paying for items, it's not always so obvious where the ineligible's fall. Couple of other items, the MSBA does not participate in mailing and moving costs for the project, so you'll see a fifty-thousand-dollar ineligible item there. And then on furnishing, furnishings and equipment and technology, there are a couple of exclusions there. The MSBA caps their participation in furniture, equipment, and technology at twenty-four-hundred dollars per student, but historically, on all projects in the Commonwealth, that has been exceeded, certainly, for example, on the Central Middle School, in order to appropriately outfit that project with furniture, equipment, and technology, the MSBA allowance was exceeded. So we've applied the same approach for the Sterling that was applied for the Central Middle School, and it results in a couple of exclusion items there. So it essentially gets us to a total in what is column B for the total project of fifty-five point seven million, and it shows that the ineligible's are sixteen-point-seven, resulting in the thirty-eight point nine million, and I think, okay, this spreadsheet, those are the numbers that exist there in total. So that's a, that's a quick run-through of all of the budget items. I would say that we talked a little bit about the auditorium at the last meeting, and the fact that it's ineligible. Certainly, every middle school we design in the Commonwealth has had an auditorium, and it becomes a big component in serving the community. Central School has an auditorium, so I think everybody has understood all along that it would be really important for the Sterling School to have the auditorium component, particularly for the community and obviously for the students. And then the other ineligible costs are just related to categorical items that the MSBA would apply to any project. You having that answer any questions? I know it's a lot of numbers, I know you've had the opportunity to take a look at them already, so.
Scott, I'm assuming that Mr. Cavanagh also wants to speak through some of the financial slides as well, so...
That is exactly right.
Maybe we'll just kind of continue with the presentation and...
Go back if you have any questions.
We'll come back, but before we transition to Mark, I just want to point out that several of our friends here from the school committee, Barbara Isoler and Barbara Goy, joining us as well, so thank you for coming, folks, and welcoming Mr. Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, councilors. I have a very brief financial presentation on this project and the affordability factor as it relates to the city budget. First slide, and there's only three of them, shows the estimated annual payments for the project and the related total debt, total debt service for the city in the corresponding fiscal year that the debt is paid. The first two years would be band payments, bond anticipation, no payments. They're interest-only, and no payment is required in the first year of issuance of the band. So hypothetically, if we were to have your approval to issue a band this fiscal year, we wouldn't have any interest payment due in fiscal seventeen, there'd be no payment due until the first band payment fiscal year eighteen, that's five-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, and this is just a long, second, second payment, nineteen-five forty-four, then we'd issue the long-term bond in twenty-twenty. For modeling purposes, we use a thirty-year bond. We wouldn't have to make that decision until we were going to the market. It's been twenty-five-year bonds, I think we did twenty-eight years on Central Middle School with two years of bands for a total of thirty, so there's some flexibility there, but we just modeled a thirty-year bond for, for purposes of tonight. The second slide is the balance of the debt. The average weight of the debt could be around point-three-five percent of the budget over the bond period. So essentially, this is a graph of the principal being paid down over time over the life of the bonds, just like a house payment, you make your house payment, your mortgage is gradually reduced over time, it's the exact same model. The average weight of the debt at the point-three-five percent is just another way of saying that the Sterling School payment would be less than half of one percent of the city budget. Not insignificant in number, but in relation to the entire city budget, certainly a small fraction thereof for a brand-new school. Third slide, I said it was brief, debt as a percent of budget, this is our benchmark, we have to go to this, and every time we're issuing debt, contemplating debt, coming to you to ask for approval. The thin red line at the top is, is the upper debt level limit, and as you can see from the graph, we're well below the limit, even including the entire Sterling project. When we go to debt as a percentage of budget, it's, we like to show this to constantly emphasize, other long-term projects are continually coming off as those bonds are paid off, projects have been long in existence, those buildings authorized decades before, it creates project capacity, the ability to the city to do new buildings, this being the third one in recent years, but it also affords the city the ability to invest in other projects, CIP plans, which I know we've had recent discussions on and will again soon. If we, if we did nothing else going forward, those percentages on the third shot, they would hold, but that's not reality, you have to constantly reinvest in new capital projects, new buildings going forward. It's really shown to emphasize that the city has a great capacity to do more as it wishes to do. That's it, very brief.
Thanks, Mark.
Good point. Thanks, Mr. Cavanagh. We'll follow up for questions, appreciate your, your presentation at this, at this point in time, because I think you see the residents, they did come up to hear about the project, potentially participate in the dialogue with respect to the project, if you would like to comment with respect to the new school, I would invite you to approach the podium. It's okay if you don't, but I just wanted to avoid the opportunity. For the record, Councilor Palamucci and I hosted a neighborhood meeting back in, was it the spring council?
No, it was again...
No, it was, I'm gonna say probably about the spring, and that was pretty well attended, folks asked some good questions, hopefully provided some feedback, you know, that reflect to some, some changes that we've heard about here this evening.
I have one question.
Please approach the podium and state your name.
Sixty-two Grand Mall Road, thank you for having this meeting. Basically, it's, am I correct, it's fifty for the finance guy, the project's about fifty-five million, and that's what we'll get a bond for fifty-five million, and then MS, the School Building Association, will give us back twenty-eight, so how much will the tax pay? My math gets it at twenty-nine million.
Right.
The taxes will have...
It's gonna be...
It's a requirement in the school building projects, as you authorize them and ask for authorization of funding, we ask, they ask the city councils and towns to authorize funding for the entire project. The entire project, authorized, not issued, so we're authorizing for even the part that the School Building Authority is gonna reimburse us, they don't want any breakage in what's been authorized by the city. It's a reimbursement program, so while we authorize for the total, we're only on the book for the percentage that the architect explained, which is, I think it's twenty-eight million, it's the two Sterling. So we would issue debt for our portion over the twenty-eight million, not the, not the fifty-nine, we don't have to issue any bonds to cover what the School Building Authority will reimburse us for. We are only issuing debt for the amount we're responsible for, the twenty-eight million.
Will we borrow, will we, will we have to borrow fifty-nine million right now and then draw up the money to come back?
It's, it's an authorization only, it tells the markets, we could hypothetically have to do that, but it's a reimbursement program, we follow the rules of the School Building Authority, and they reimburse us that portion between twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Okay, so I mean, that would be added on, like, I mean, currently, right now, how much long-term debt do we have? I mean, I, I look at this, it's like fifty-nine million more of long-term debt...
No.
...that we're gonna be adding on top of what we currently have. Am I wrong in that?
You're wrong in that, we're authorizing fifty-nine, we'll be adding on about twenty-eight million through the issuance of the first band, and then long-term.
Okay, okay, thank you. And Mark, just before the record, procedurally, when we've done all the projects and programmed with MSBA, albeit what comes behind is a window replacement program, the process is essentially the same?
Oh, yes, it is, they use the same building code, we're getting...
The bonding, the bonding.
Yes, the bonding is exactly the same.
Financial model, if you will, obviously varies in the amounts vary project to project, but the procedure is...
Exactly the same.
With that, I would defer to the board for City Council, who represents the current and newest Sterling, Councilor Palamucci.
Thank you, Councilor, Colonel Chen and Colonel. First, thank you for being willing to, your committee, your call to host this here, I think it's fitting that we have it here, you know, we get to see it, it can be in the building when we take this vote, if we take a vote tonight. I do have a couple of questions, but I want to thank you very much, for, for letting us have a meeting. I guess to, I guess to extend it to Mark, the model, you said the model for purposes tonight showed one repayment, a definite amount of repayment model that we use, it'll depend on the market.
Yes, this is, this is just a model, we had to make some assumptions as far as the interest rates, we were conservative, we used higher than we actually expected. You don't actually get the interest rate you're going to pay until you sell the bond or the band in the market that day, things fluctuate.
Sure, is that the only thing that fluctuates, the interest rate, on the duration of repayment?
Well, yeah, the, well, the band would be for a year, then you get to renew it, it's a staple of bond anticipation notes, no interest in the first year, they could take it, so it's really a free first right at the apple, that first year that of issuance, you're getting the money, get the project going, you're not paying any interest on it at all, which helps to get communities into those projects. You really want to balance the, the long-term equalized payments, the one-point-five million in this model, over the useful life of the project, you don't want to be paying the big money when you're just putting a hole in the ground.
Sure, and that's why you're using twenty-four-nine to pay off?
Uh, yeah, we used thirty years, we could've picked twenty-five, we could've picked twenty-eight, like Central Middle School, I think was, and that's a judgment call that can be made at the time of issuance to the long-term.
That's what I was asking, so that, that'll depend on the market when...
Yeah, you kind of read it, two years, I would say what's, what's best for us, talk to the investment bankers, and go from there.
All right, my last question for you, is one I know is that you have this for tonight, or maybe you could email us and let us know. I'm curious, when you, when you show that statistic of the point-three-five percent of the, point-over-five percent of the total debt as a percentage of budget, I'm curious if you were to add Central, the high school, the distribution insurance, yeah, I'd be curious, I mean, each piece as well as the combination, I'm curious as a percentage of the total budget, what the debt is for what the city has done in terms of investments, including the, the window replacement projects that we've done, I, I would be interested in seeing that.
We, we, I actually saw one of those pie charts, Eric's problem, he's already got it done, I, I didn't, I wasn't in love with that pie chart, the smaller projects, the school windows and things, they were the tightest slices of pie, but the same in relation to the bigger projects, and I said, this is just about Sterling, so let's just stay with, with the Sterling.
No, I appreciate it.
What we already have it done.
I, I think it would be interesting to see, I mean, it really helps put in perspective the investment that the administration and the council, and the school department, that we as residents have put into our school buildings, you know, just infrastructure of bringing our schools up to modern technology standards.
I agree, and I'd be surprised if you don't have it by the end of the day tomorrow.
True, thank you. And I have a couple of questions for Scott. Thank you, Mark. The, on your spreadsheet, at the very top, it was the feasibility study?
Yeah, that is it, yeah.
Didn't you already pay some of those?
Yes.
Okay, so that's gone included in the bottom line number, that's in this council order of fifty-nine million, or is it?
I don't know if the city plans on rolling that in or not, but those amounts have already been paid.
Is it, I mean, it's, what, five million, six, six-hundred-and-eighty...
Yeah, six-hundred-and-eighty thousand, timed out.
It's, I have no, we have to find this place, it's for the feasibility in environmental site, where is the design work, to be sure it's all feasibility.
That, that is correct, Councilor Palamucci.
All right, so I did be curious as to whether or not that, three-quarters of a million dollars is included in the fifty-nine and on, and it doesn't affect the way we're going down, I'd be curious moving forward, because I know we've already authorized, we'll borrow that, but at least one occasion, we won't borrow that, that one itself. And then I saw there was a line item for asbestos, I think there was some out there, ninety thousand, what it was. How certain are you that we've captured the full amount, given what Councilor Forrest went through with Y, and with Y, her ward, and just ahead of that cause of the name on it, when you find more and more asbestos, the demolition just slows to a grind, all the disaster, you know, it has to be safety orders, obviously, you have to have specialists brought in, so clearly that's something that could really be sanding years of progress. So I'm just curious, is, clearly there's some asbestos, right, is a, is a line item, how certain are you that's, you've captured the full extent of that?
The line item for it, as you identify it, here is line item eighty-two, one-point-one-six-four million dollars in removal cost, and that number is generated based on a detailed survey within the existing building. building by hazardous material consultant, and then all of the analysis and lab testing that were done on all the samples that were taken. I think we took somewhere around 400 samples from various materials, walls, et cetera, and we feel very good about that. Your concern is still a very legitimate one, in that on all of these projects, there's certainly the potential that you can open up a wall. We, we didn't do destructive demolition of the building for obvious reasons, and we avoided, uh, interfering with any kind of material that might potentially, um, create any hazard at, at all. So it's a very conservative estimate based on the samples that were taken. We've had really good luck with this particular consultant and their analysis and their estimates, but certainly the, the concern is always out there, but a significant amount of money identified for-
I was reading, I was reading that the live water, which was a million, I was reading the 90,000, that's why it was, it didn't seem like it acted a lot of money.
Right, it, it's a little misleading, because the 90,000 is only for the removal of asbestos tile flooring. And e- even that is not, I would point out, because whenever we say there's asbestos in the building, certainly that always, um, tends to raise a concern. There's no friable asbestos in the building, meaning there is no potential exposure to anybody who walked in that building today, but once we start demolition, we stir all that up, so we have to remove all of it before we start that process. And so the 90,000 dollars is purely for floor tile, the 1.164 million goes into all kinds of other materials, um, that are, um, asbestos pertaining to the building.
And hopefully we didn't use the same consultant that they use of the Y, when we predicted there wasn't any asbestos yet. When you say conservative, you're meaning, what you mean by conservative is that you priced it higher-
Yes.
Than you expected, that the number's higher than you expect you'll need, so that you can work into the number, you know, go over budget on it, right?
We increased both quantity and unit costs higher to make sure that we, that budget would cover the work, the work required. And that number is made up of, as I said, all, all that testing resulted in our consultant quantifying exactly how much pipe is asbestos, exactly how much wall is asbestos, exactly how much ceiling is asbestos, down to the square footage and linear footage, so all of those amounts were increased in order to be conservative.
Okay, um, and then there's some neighbors here that I was talking to, who live, uh, direct from others, and I know, John, you could focus on the financing, and we talked about, um, kind of the design timeline, and, uh, and some of the other aspects, site design and the project that you presented for the council a couple of weeks ago, but if you could just, for the benefit of the folks who are here, um, talk about the construction timeline, uh, and potential impacts in the neighborhood, how, uh, will work to mitigate those, or the folks that live in the immediate area, as well as the students who are going in, because this will be an open area.
Sure. We, we have about eight months as we move forward to design and document the building, you know, the construction that will be done, both in terms of the new building and the site. During that period of time, as the council has recommended and suggested, we will be back out, and, and certainly the mayor has been adamant about, uh, engaging the community, so we'll be back out to talk to those neighbors and the butters and bring them up to speed on what the planning is and what's going on, and-
If I could just jump in, the Councilor Coroll, I would be happy to, as another community member, you guys feel it's appropriate to get, you know, more, perhaps less from the school community, I guess it applies equally to the school community as to the disruption of the kids in the school, but we may have to know something, you know, with the school department, and get the word out to run folks.
I, I think that exact same time of forum would be excellent for us to have a discussion and talk about, because it would be very similar to that discussion, it would just be updating them and getting any additional input they, they might have on the process for the proposed project. The, at the end of that eight months or so, we would be, uh, close to next April, let's say, for example. At that point in time, uh, the project schedule assumes that a contractor in kind of the April-May timeframe would start to mobilize on the site, and so the neighborhood would start to see a presence, mobilize, tend to mean, you know, temporary fencing would go in place, some visual barriers would go in place to block as much of the activity as possible, designated areas would be established for contractor parking and stack parking, and those kind of things would take place, and that tends to take about a month. But our goal is to be able to begin construction activity kind of in its purest form when school is out for the summer. And as we've indicated in the past, it's about an 18-month construction period, so during that period of time, certainly there would be a lot of activity on the site. During that period of time, it's not a time when we would just go away, our, your owner's project manager would go away, in fact, it's just the opposite. The whole purpose of having a daily onsite presence by owner's project manager and having us continue through the construction is to continue to engage the neighborhood, um, in some form. Uh, sometimes it's on a weekly basis, sometimes it's on a monthly basis, depending on who wants, you know, how many people want to participate in the process, but certainly keeping them informed about what's going on and allowing them to ask questions right onto the construction process.
Oh, great, thank you very much. We'll go over the questions that I have. I'd be happy to make a motion that would be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make my question.
Yeah, I believe, Councilwoman Pambuchi, it's a few questions, but we'll come back to that in a second, maybe.
Sure.
Councilwoman Pambuchi.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Coroll, and, uh, as well as Councilwoman Pambuchi. Uh, I have a few comments, and then a couple of questions for AI3, Scott. Um, just want to say right off the bat, I'm very excited about this project in general. Um, being an alumni of Quincy High School and having that building in 2010, now also being an alumni of Sterling Middle School back in 1989, we're graduating here at middle school, to have the second, the two of the three schools beyond that give heart, and so I'm very looking forward to this, um, looking out into the audience, as well as working on the school committee prior to this council position on Sterling Middle School Building Committee with you guys as a team. Um, I know all your hard work is, um, is definitely on the base, AI3, Jasser, Lesser, Mississippinans, and the whole team, um, coming up here on the council, and now we're getting into the phase of appropriating financial and funding of this. Overall, I'm looking at the five, 59,000 dollars, or 59 million, that's going to be appro- approved, I guess I could say. On my numbers here, and if Mr. Cabral or Mr., or Scott as well, can elaborate a little bit on the, the reimbursement rate and the total incentive points, as well as being one, um, it goes through a function of 59 to be approved, but then it goes into a structure of 39 million, uh, nine, nine, and then 29 million, five. Can you talk a little bit about the MSBA reimbursement rate where it's differ? You're gonna, uh, 28 million will be appropriated to be bonded, whereas 59 is on there, but it's only, the numbers are a little skewed here. How, can you explain a little bit to the public that's going to see the 73.22%?
Sure. The, the reimbursement rate is calculated, is the 73.2% that you identified, and it's calculated based on a number of factors. That reimbursement rate applies to the eligible cost on the project. So earlier, when I was identifying some of the ineligible cost on the project, the reimbursement doesn't apply to those. So if, it has the effect of reducing somewhat the reimbursement rate, the effective reimbursement rate when applied to the, the total project, I would point out that the 73.22% reimbursement is very high compared to other cities and towns in the Commonwealth. The city of Quincy, uh, Mayor Coke, the council, has had a lot of success and has a really good relationship with the MSBA to be able to turn around and do another middle school project as quickly, and everything we see there is a result, the number being so high is a result of the relationship that, much of the relationship that the city has with MSBA. That even said, your effective rate, um, depends on all of the things that are deemed ineligible, and when I was identifying ineligible costs, I identified, and the MSBA would identify everything in this project categorically that might be deemed ineligible. That doesn't mean it will definitely be ineligible, for example, they're assuming that all of your contingency on this project would be spent, now that every single penny, and that that would become ineligible, that's, that may not be the case at all. So the reason for maybe some confusion is when they calculate the kind of minimum effective reimbursement rate, it's about 51% of the project, um, considering all of the ineligible. That, it's likely that it won't end up that low, it certainly won't be 73.2, because we know there are items like the auditorium that will not be eligible, but they're giving you kind of a high and a low range of eligibility, a low effective rate of potentially 51, and then your calculated rate of 73.2. And it results, when, when they calculate that low-end effective rate of 51%, it results in those numbers that you mentioned, where they say their maximum grant, assuming all of those ineligible, is the 29.2 million dollars that you mentioned.
I have two more questions. Obviously, this, this building is non-handicap accessible without an elevator. Would the elevator that you're going to put in, does that cover, and is that constituted under the, uh, reimbursement?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
That's very important. And secondly, um, I know that when the MSBA comes in and says, listen, if you do a amount of green space, we're going to give you a little bit more incentive points, are we in that category for our green space here as this, this grounds, this school?
You, you did, you received for this project, the MSBA in calculating your 73.2% reimbursement gave you an additional 2% for a greens, essentially a green school, which I think is what you're referring to.
What is usually the average, uh, green space that most schools get, or where at 2%, where is it the average usually?
2% is the highest amount you can receive. Uh, I would suggest that most schools fall at 1% or lower. Uh, 2% requires that you be a LEED Silver building when you're finished in. LEED Silver certification doesn't just mean your building, it means your entire site, and the way you're dealing with transportation to the site, the way you're dealing with parking on the site, the way you're dealing with green space on the side. A lot of people think if you have a LEED Silver certified building, it's just the building, it's all of those things you're talking about in terms of having a green sign.
Last, and just a comment, I want to, I want to thank you for, for all your hard work with the, when the configurations, there's two middle schools in the city of Quincy that are under a five to eight grade configuration, and, you know, we talked about it prior to this being discussed, that we have a separate entrance, a separate fifth grade entrance in this building, this new building, which you guys took the advice of myself and other colleagues to do that. I want to thank you for that, because actually listened to the group to have a separate entrance for that fifth grade level, and the sixth and seventh and eighth, the one, one have a separate entrance. And you were talking at last meeting about the two levels of six, fifth and sixth will be on this level, seventh and eighth will be up to this level. So I like your proactive approach on making this happen for the city of Quincy, as well as the kids that are going to, and the families that are going to be involved in this. Thank you.
Well, it was our pleasure, certainly the staff and administration, and the council, the mayor, all of those involved in the project have a lot of experience with school design and are very committed to the school department, so it's really just been kind of taking their advice and continuing to program with them, and I think the school will be shockingly innovative and very community friendly, and, um, it all comes as a result of a design that reflects what the staff and administration, the council, and the city wanted, so we're very proud of it.
Thank you, Chairman Coroll, thank you.
Councilman, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, um, again, Scott, I just, looking at this form, I just want to make sure I understand that in terms of what we're looking at, and I direct your attention to page two. Uh, under construction budget, it's about 46.5 million under that, correct?
That is correct.
And that's the sum, if we go back on to page one, we talk about substructure, shell, materials, all of these different things actually represent that, that's how that amount is reached, correct?
That is correct, that is the total of all site and bid-related costs, yes.
Now, when we get to the overall excluding construction cost, which is about 14.3 million dollars, how, that specific number you, I, you indicated, that's what you're really talking, as it relates to the auditorium and the construction, construction costs associated with that specifically?
It has two components. One of them is the auditorium at just over 4 million dollars. The other component of that is the delta between what MSBA refers to as their construction cost cap participations and your actual construction cost. For example, right now, the MSBA construction cost cap is 312 dollars per square foot. However, there are no middle schools being constructed in the Commonwealth for 312 dollars.
So essentially, if you were to go through those various lines and the construction component, you couldn't break out essentially how much, where the cap's been exceeded?
Yes, you, you could. That's, that's not the way they do it, the way they do it is they do a more simple calculation, they essentially take the size of the building in terms of square footage, they extract the size of the auditorium, they take that square footage, um, after they've extracted the auditorium, they apply their 312 dollars per square foot, and they come up with a construction number, and then they take the delta between that construction number and what your construction budget is.
And I think you mentioned in your earlier testimony, again, that, um, this is consistent with similar projects around the state as it relates to both the cap and the auditorium cost?
Very, very much so. We certainly have never done a middle school that did not include an auditorium, so every one of our middle schools, the MSBA's extracted this cost, there are numerous examples, I would suggest, you know, 75% of the middle schools, um, have an auditorium, so very similar in the way MSBA is handling the ineligible portion of that cost, the same, same with the cost cap, um, all the projects, it applies the exact same way.
Based on the, for each formula that you suggested.
I, I would suggest that your reimbursement rate, even your effective reimbursement rate, is very high compared to many other cities and towns in the Commonwealth.
You know, it's interesting of, um, some historical context for this, is that, I'm thinking this is 15 years, this is my 15th year on the St. Quincy City Council. In year one, this was being discussed, a little guy used to be a reporter, was sitting in the gallery, listened to some of this, and it's always part of the plan that there's a new Quincy High School, a new Central, and a new Sterling School, was the key thing, and, and again, uh, it's amazing, it is 15 years later, and it's happening, the reality of it's happening. So I, I think that this community in particular has been very efficient in relation to this, and I think, again, of both the war, past and present, uh, Ward Ford, Ward Two councilors need to be commended as well for their, their advocacy over the years, so I intend to support the motion, thank you.
Which councilman, Councilman?
So I have a question for you, I appreciate that you're very prescient of the numbers, but this relates specifically to the debt as a percentage of the budget. I just want to remind you about the overall debt we have as a city that we're taking on with multiple projects that we have working on, and this includes very specifically the CIP, so you have in here that the upper 7% that we wanted stayed under, far away from the, a little over 7.5%.
7.5%.
And with this, it says, this includes the CIP, the end of Sterling Project, and including the five numbers with Central Middle School and Quincy High School included as well, and that brings us to what will be over probably 5.3.
Correct.
That being said, does CIP in here already include the full five-year requested CIP, or does this just include CIP as an entry so far? for the full five-year, just so that we know what we're looking at?
Uh, well, that hasn't been all spelled out, but as we go step by step, I think we'll be addressing some things in some upcoming, upcoming meetings. We can update those schedules for what's in front of you, so you always know exactly what the percentages will be with each vote.
Because I know that we had some numbers out that haven't been voted on yet. We have the numbers, so we have.
Right, correct. So, uh, we could actually model it out for you, of what each thing was, and put the whole universe in there, and show you what the debt cap would be to what an approval vote on virtually everything proposed.
Thank you.
Yo, Sir Counselor?
Yes, sir.
Mark, Mr. Cavani, real quick before we go to the end, I have a sense you have a cold, so thank you for, for hanging in there. Your constantly anger brings up a pretty good point when we think about this as, you know, the overall big picture. I say it all the time, you folks work in it day to day, so you understand the numbers backwards and forwards. But again, you know, we mean on a somewhat recurring basis, so that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
At least the anticipation, what I'm, what I'm also interested in too, because, you know, you can see it when you drive throughout the city, there's a, there's a ton of new growth happening. So, new growth, my mind's essentially going to be new revenue coming to the city. So, I'm wondering, is there a way, or is somebody looking at the anticipated revenue growth as it relates to some of these high-density construction projects? And what that could potentially mean for offsetting some of these proposed expenditures?
Uh, that's an ongoing calculation that we have to do for the tax rate recap. I met with the assessor for several hours yesterday. We actually had a conference call with the outside accountants and powers about what procedures we were following, our progress, Colleen Ely is in touch with DOR. They've been signing off on a TAP program, which we constantly check in with DOR because it's Colleen's first year. And they've offered us that opportunity to kind of go step by step with them. So, we're right on target on, on all our projections so far. I think we're gonna have a pretty, pretty healthy growth number, as you've noticed as you drive across the city. And I think that'll be reflected when we come before you with the tax rate information in just a few weeks.
Right. So, you largely put numbers to it in a few weeks?
We have, we'll have the exact number of.
What we'll see in terms of coming on this year, that's like a periodic assessment, so next year will be obviously a different number.
Exactly.
Obviously online, being, being revenues actually.
It's filed by our office, reviewed, and signed off and certified by DOR.
Thank you. Counselor King?
Thanks. Chairman, I just have one question. Scott, I was looking at the budget and I can't cross the appraisal line, and there's zero money allocated there, which probably because you don't need to praise this, it's not gonna for sale or anything, but this is a beautiful old building. And when you're demolishing it, is there any way to, I mean, if selling anything in here, does everything just go to waste?
It, it will be up to, it'll be up to the city. Building Committee, School Committee could certainly make any decisions surrounding that. I would say typically, we certainly want to remove from the building anything that has any kind of historic value, plaques, et cetera, et cetera. With regard to the actual materials in the building, generally, you know, even on an old building like this, this was not an expensive building when it was constructed, believe it or not. You look at the interiors, it's faux marble, it's not even real marble, there's like, it was clearly, there were clearly some budget challenges even when this was built. So, even though it's an old building, it's not nearly as high quality as we might see for a building of this era. So, there's, it's not like they're salvageable marble or granite or anything, anything like that. That being said, when the building is demolished, in order to obtain the LEED Silver Certification, and I mentioned, one of the things we'll have to do is the materials for this building will all be recycled, the brick will be recycled. Essentially, ninety percent of this building will be recycled in some form or fashion when it is demolished. So, it doesn't become some called waste, it's just going to land. Though, there are very stringent requirements that we'll put in place with regard for what happens, do you think that is left for the contractor to demolish?
I appreciate that. That's good to know. I thought there might be an opportunity for an Antiques Roadshow or something. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, King.
My colleagues, just, just one final question, if you don't mind, I don't know if it's better suited to maybe Mr. Cavani, so I think you come up there again. But, obviously, this is, this is a technology outlet for the school, right? And I'm assuming.
You're talking about the CIP?
No, I'm talking about in, in this.
Within this budget?
In this budget. So, you know, you know where the question's going. There's no connectivity between the technology going on in here, there's no overlap between what's gonna be put in front of us in terms of the technology spend at large.
Not to my knowledge, I don't want anybody to have some information on that.
I would assume not, but I would figure it would.
That's what I'm hearing, you know.
I would ask the question, just to kind of comment in closing, I guess, you know, is this.
We can clarify that, excuse me, Chairman, we can clarify that before the discussion of this technology piece of CIP. We can double-check.
Right. I mean, you could have that answer within a day.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. No, it's fair. Just as somebody who represents, you know, a constituency of Pennsill, that tends to, and I wanna thank, you know, all the folks that were participatory in this process, just looking through the, through the workload, it takes many hands, and, you know, certainly on behalf of the folks I represent, and tend, tend the school, wanna express my gratitude. You know, as I, as I think about the big picture, in the city, what we're trying to do with the revital, revitalization of downtown, I just think further investment and education are absolutely imperative, particularly when, you know, you're trying to create a vibrant environment downtown and attracting a millennial crowd. The next, the next goal of the exercise is retention. How do you retain those folks when they, when they get married and they have children? Looking across this council, we're all fairly young with young children, and I know that what's on my mind is the quality of the educational system. And, you know, to just be a part of the process and, you know, investing in, in education is just very, very, very crucial. And, you know, again, I just wanted to thank everyone for their, for their hard work on this proposal, and I believe at this point, seeing no further questions, Counselor Cavani?
Yes. Your last question. May I ask one? I'm a resident of Quincy for about seventy years now.
Why, why would you stay here to even address this?
My name is Ray Tumuchi, I live on Center Street up here. I see how many revisites. This is the first I actually knew that this process has come this far. Have we had other area meetings for this school project?
We have.
And where were they found to be? I've never received any mailings.
I don't have the residential informational mail-out slip in front of me, sir. We could get that information.
What was?
But I can assure you that both myself, Counselor Tumuchi, and the project team, we hosted a, a ward-wide, multiple ward-wide meeting down in Lincoln Hancock. I'm gonna guess it was early spring of this year.
For the residents?
For the residents, correct.
How many residents is that here now? About twenty. We cannot just have meetings, but before they put their final building in, we had fifty, sixty, seventy people at all the meetings. This is a, what do you get today to vote on? The project? Go ahead? Don't go ahead?
The financing for the project.
The finance?
Correct.
And what kind of feedback will the residents have from here on in with this project?
What I believe the architect had laid it out, once we get further down the road of concept, the goal, at least from the Ward Council's perspective, is to reconvene with the residential neighborhood. And as you know, anytime you have a, you know, thirty, forty, fifty million dollar project, there is going to be change that takes place in the neighborhood. So, speaking of somebody who represents a constituency a little bit outside of Ward Four, and I'll let Counselor Tumuchi weigh in, it's our intention to make sure that A, you're engaged, B, you're informed, and C, you have an open line of communication with all members of the project team, as well as, you know, your representatives in government.
That's too bad, I really haven't heard anything about this. Have you sent other mailings out? Sorry? Yes, I hear the council for Ward Four.
I'm running over to make some meetings.
Yes, I'm.
Yeah, we've had several meetings, done several.
Wait, I find, I've never received anything in the mail that they were.
I'm told the second, the city council clerk has told me you've been mailed all mailings. I also do robo calls, send out the robo telephone.
Robos, oh, okay. Well, I never received any mailings.
I sent out, I sent out twelve thousand calls about this meeting, so the fact that I can tell people about meeting, but it's illegal for me to capture them.
No, I understand all that, I understand all that, but I feel kind of, it's too bad. Oh, thank you, oh, thank you for having us. I wish I had been here more involved in the past, I had plenty of questions, so I, example, do you have time for these folks? A few questions right now.
Uh, what is it, does it pertain to the financing?
No, that's the financing, that, this is all about the financing right now. I wonder if I, will I be able to ask other questions about, why is this school being replaced and not rebuilt? As certain things, traffic, pest control, all that, and that, those kind of questions. When will I be able to ask something, when are you gonna get that information?
I don't wanna speak for the architect, because I'm not the one running point on this project, other project management team, I don't know if he had more of a definitive timeline on rough estimate, could supply this gentleman, but, you know, like, like I said, sir, it's, it's our intention as Ward Councilors representing, you know, constituencies that bought this project, and have folks that attend to the school, you know, to make those resources available to you. We want this to go as seamless and uninterrupted as.
Any questions on board with an enabling?
Yeah, I don't think.
Where, it's a requirement.
Where?
Across the. Cross street, so here, folks. Oh, I see this school all the time, I've been there seventy years, and the impact on the traffic, pest control, all that kind of stuff really important to me, bill the state taxes, let's, let's increase on that. Those are the questions I wanna ask. Do I have questions to you all the time?
You can, you're addressing to us now, yeah, and that's fine. We have to talk to you about it now, we have to talk about it later.
Okay, I'll ask you a little.
And it's, and it's part of any construction projects, there, just for the record, whether it's large scale, like the ones before us, or any other, you know, smaller, moderate residential project in a neighborhood, those are all stipulations as it pertains to getting the permits that you have.
One last question. Is this a debt deal? Is there a team that we have in this school?
Well, I believe we're about here for a motion to move approval on the financing.
So, I suspect it's probably gonna be out of the side. All right, thank you, Senator.
Thank you for, for your comments.
Well, I hope you're, I hope you're serious about that. Yeah?
I am.
Sure, actually, this is why we had a meeting in the neighborhood. It's a little bit easier for folks to come to, and come into the city hall.
Thank you. This is the first I've heard of this.
It's, it's shocking to me.
It's, it's shocking to me, and it's very depressing to me. One letter. How many letters you came up with? Many?
Emails.
Emails, Facebook, sending the Patreon page a number of times?
Thanks.
But I'm glad you came out today.
Thank you.
Just a question for the audience, may I show up hands, I'm just curious, how many Sterling among are in the audience with us today?
How many what?
Sterling among.
Your hands.
Counselor Vaughn, I didn't see your hand up, right? I was just curious to see, you know, there's one property straight in, in love with our schools, and this is a school that's certainly created well, but it's definitely is nearing the end of its useful life and its time for the next generation, modern facility for our community, really proud to be supporting that here this evening, so, thank you. Chairman Crowell.
Chair recognizes Counselor Tumuchi.
How would you, if you think Counselor, if you're always kinda getting attention?
Thank you, Chairman Crowell. If you did ask the question, and I kinda can elaborate a little bit on, when you asked the question, why are we building a new facility, a new school, rather than build it off of this? They did a physical study, and it came back with numbers that it's just gonna cost way too much more financial money to rebuild this school off of what the existing plan is. And that the reimbursement from the MSBA, the seventy-three percent that we're gonna get back, it outweighs building off of this school. This is a very, very old facility that has no handicap accessibility, no elevator, I mean, there's, there's stuff in this building that is just way too old to upgrade, I could say. And being on Sterling, knowing too many prior to this body of the council, we went through these studies, which Austin and less, our AI three teams, as well as superintendent, we did these studies prior to coming to this. So, I'm glad you asked that question, and just to elaborate a little bit on it.
So, this, this building is gonna be destroyed. Where's the new building?
I can, I, the, what's gonna happen is, is half the building's gonna be built, as some of the children are still in the facility.
Yep.
And then what's gonna happen is, they're gonna do a two-tier system where the kids at different times and stages of the year will be not in the facility where they can finish other parts, so it won't disrupt school at all. Over the summer as well, they'll work on more of this. The AI three team is more experienced than I am on this exact timeline, but I'm to the knowledge that that's how it's gonna play out, that there will be no disruption with the children being in the school.
So, the finished school is gonna be on the same site as this building?
Very similar on the cliff, see the cliff coming down, on the, on the, where the cliff comes down, it'll be right on that, and coming to this facility, and there'll be some.
You know, the other guy is pointing to you. You just answered my question, you feel that I'm a resident, you treat me as a resident.
Sure. And I understand, as well as your practice as well.
You're just gonna ask me these questions. Well, I'm gonna upset that I never do anything about this. Very upset. Tax pay for seventy years here. And I won't get to the bottom of it, whose fault that is? And I think it is someone's fault. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Crowell.
Thank you, Counselor. There are several charettes right outside of the door as well, sir, just artistic recordings, if you.
No, thank you.
If I may, thank you, Chairman Crowell. I, I have to say this is probably one of the more prouder moments I've had representing Ward Four on the council, being able to make this motion tonight, I suspect, hopefully make the same motion, or a similar motion, when we meet as a full council, in, in supporting the new Sterling. As Counselor Finn had talked, this is something, as you mentioned, this is something that's been talked about for decades, the need for a new school here, for improvement in the infrastructure here is obvious, it's been obvious for a long, long time. What we're doing tonight, or what we'll do tonight, is send a message, as we have done as a body, as the Koch administration has done, as the administration prior to that had done, that we believe and we value education, and quality education in Quincy, and that we're prepared to spend money in service of that goal, to create facilities that support twenty-first century education, build twenty-first century buildings that have the technology of today, so that our students will have this modern, innovative technology in the classroom, and they'll be able to appreciate how important education is when the residents and community leaders are putting money behind that education. So, before I make the motion, I do just wanna thank the, I'm lucky enough to be sitting in this seat as a Ward Four Councilor tonight, but there were many folks who have sat in this seat before me, Counselor Sheets, Counselor Fabrizio, Counselor D'Amico, Counselor Conley, and Counselor Davis, who also advocated for this, who also pushed for this, and who, who's, without whose work we wouldn't be able to be doing this tonight. Dozens of school committee members who have worked on this over the years, Mayor Koch, the School Building Committee, thank them for their work, all their hard work on this over the years, the many parent slash advocate, because that's really what our involved parents are, is our advocates for their children and the education system in the, in the city of Quincy. And then last but not least, Dr. DiCristofaro and his team, and thank you very much. The community really for coming together, supporting this in the process, I know this, the School Building Committee, as community members who have been a part of this, all along, the folks who come out, the many folks who come out to the community meetings, that Counselor Crowell and I have, the folks who give us feedback outside of meetings about the school, and I've kind of passed at least five years or so. This is the room that I've had. that Councilor Crowell lined up, which will give us feedback outside of meetings about the school. And I've passed at least five years or so. This is the room that I've had just one of my community meetings, many things going on in the board, whether it's developments or other issues that we're getting together as a community to discuss in West Quincy, in this room. And I cannot tell you how many times someone of advanced years of, is it okay? Is there people present, advanced years? Folks who didn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't, who come in and say, I can't believe this school is still here. It looks exactly the same as when I went in fifty years ago. And they sit in the chairs and they said, "Councilor, these the same chairs?" I'm like, I don't know. But this building has been here a long time and a lot of folks in our community have gone through this building. And it's those folks who know best that it's time for a new room. It's time for a new investment, okay? So I want to thank all those folks, all the community members who have participated in the process all the way. And it's with great pride that I get to sit here tonight as a Ward Four councillor and move approval of two thousand, move positive recognition of two thousand, Councilor of two thousand sixteen dash two oh two appropriation amount of fifty-nine million dollars for the purpose of paying the cost of designing and constructing a new Sterling school.
I would like a second to the discussion on the motion. Claire, can you call the roll?
Councilman King?
Yes.
Councilman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilman Finn?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Hughes?
Yes.
Councilman Forrest?
Yes.
Councilman Liam?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Councilman Mudge?
I get the call, right? Yes.
Yes. Nine members for passes, you name it, sweet. And again, thank you everybody for taking time to come participate in the meeting, declare this motion adjourned. We declare this meeting closed at seven fifty-two.